Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, May 21st, 2004. City Council meetings every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable stations, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is now 10:08 a.m. and we have eight members present, too shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special presentations and introductions scheduled. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very pleased today to have a very special friend of the people in the San Fernando Valley with us today. Dorina Nepper is the Director of Government Affairs for California State University at Northridge. Dorina has worked for now forty years at the university and she's worked with distinction. Most probably she began her career as a graduate of Cal State Northridge. Back then it was Valley State College, probably? Valley State College, originally. Now Cal State Northridge. And she was an undergraduate degree in English. She moved on to become Executive Assistant to the Vice President and then Executive Assistant to the President of the university. And I've already spoken about what she's doing there, this great new president there, and the outreach they have there. She served for twenty years as Director of Government Affairs and is a vital voice of the university and the community. More important, she has stepped outside that role. She works in various capacities in the community, supporting the neighborhood councils which are being formed in the area, working with the Chamber of Commerce, working in the Business Improvement District. Dorina has always been a person that when you wanted to talk to the university, she was the go-to gal. And no matter who the president was, now you've served under three presidents? There are four presidents at the university. She's just been a great person to talk to, a great person to work with, always out there promoting the university but with a total understanding of its role in the community. And understanding that there's a very important synergy that takes place in Northridge between the university, which is one of our greatest assets in the entire San Fernando Valley, but also the connectedness to the community as well. And she's worn both those hats very well with great distinction. And so I wanted to honor her for her twenty years as Director of Government Affairs, but more importantly, forty years of service to the university and in importance also to the community. So Dorina, congratulations on forty great years of service to California State University in Northridge, our great jewel of the valley. Thank you so much.
Ms. Gruel.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Greg. I rise in support and acknowledgement today of your tremendous accomplishments. And we had a tour recently, I guess in the last six months, where she took me all over. And she bubbles with enthusiasm about Cal State Northridge and really is a wealth of knowledge and someone who is a great cheerleader for the Cal State Northridge. And I just wanted to say, congratulations as well. You have added tremendously to that university and to the San Fernando Valley and the city as a whole. And pleased to know you. And just sorry that you're in Greg's district instead of mine. So, you know, but congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. And just also like to add, you've been a tremendous help to me, even though Mr. Smith is the one with the privilege and the honor of having the university in his district, Cal State Northridge does reach out throughout the San Fernando Valley and beyond, out to Santa Clarita, out to Ventura County especially. And so we're all just thankful to be able to be partners with the university. And you're the face, you're the community face for the university. Thanks for your job. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Perry, are you ready with your presentation?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think council members from Council Districts Three, Five, Eight, Twelve, and Fourteen, if they're available, may want to stand up here with me. Today, we are recognizing sponsors of the Emergency Preparedness Fairs. It's a real pleasure to join with the Emergency Preparedness Department, to salute some of the sponsors of the 2004 Emergency Preparedness Fairs. Thank you very much for rising so that we can recognize you. As you know, April was Emergency Preparedness Month in the city of Los Angeles. It was also the time in which the city's emergency operations organization held its 13th Annual Emergency Preparedness Fair at six locations throughout the city of Los Angeles. The purpose of this fair is to educate Angelenos about the importance of individual, family, and neighborhood emergency preparedness. Today, we want to recognize those corporate sponsors who made important contributions to make this fair a huge success. To show our appreciation, we have certificates signed by the entire city council and framed posters from this year's Emergency Preparedness Fair for each of our sponsors. And we want to thank all of them for their support. And I am going to pass the certs out in the back because there are so many, but I just want to recognize the names of the organizations and then we'll do the individual recognitions in the back. That is the Community Redevelopment Agency, Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, Northrop Grumman, Business and Industry Council on Emergency Planning and Preparedness, Westfield Shopping Town Topanga, Westfield Shopping Town Eagle Rock, Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza, the Department of Recreation and Parks, Department of Health Services, Bioterrorism Preparedness Program, Human Relations Commission, Allstate Insurance, Southern California Earthquake Center, Comcast Spotlight, American Red Cross, Westside Pavilion, and the Los Angeles Convention Center. Additionally, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the volunteers of the Emergency Air Response Unit who participated in the Emergency Preparedness Fair at Balboa Park in Councilman Smith's district, or I believe that was in Councilman Smith's district. Okay, you're joining. All right, very good. Their presence allowed families and children to see one of their response helicopters up close. This unit is dedicated to preparing for emergencies and responding to the needs of the city of Los Angeles and other local, state, and federal authorities in times of crisis. And the certificate will be presented to Jonathan Ames, the Commander of the Emergency Air Response Unit. Do you have the certificate? You want to present? Is he? Okay. Mr. Ames, Commander Ames. Okay, Commander Ames, you want to come on up here? Lastly, I would like to commend the BICEP Emergency Response Team Challenge winners. On April the 4th, the BICEP Emergency Response Teams Challenge for community teams was held at the Los Angeles Convention Center. Throughout the day, eight community emergency response teams that were cert-trained and were tested on seven events. Two of the eight teams were comprised of members from the Los Angeles community teams. First place was awarded to the Los Angeles Green Hornets. And second place was awarded to the Los Angeles Palace Guards. Present here today are members of both winning cert teams. Representing the Los Angeles Green Hornets, first-place winners is cert team captain Hector Alfaro. And representing the Los Angeles Palace Guards, second-place winners is cert team captain Ralph Ricketson. all-hazard training. This valuable course is designed to help you protect yourself, your family, your neighbors, and your neighborhood in an emergency situation. I want to say congratulations to everyone and to thank you for their participation. We couldn't survive without you. And thank you for teaching us the importance of emergency preparedness. And thank you, just in the nick of time, our chief of the fire chief is here, Bill Barmatry. Anyway, if any of my other colleagues would want to say a few words, which I'm sure and no doubt they will, then we can let Mr. Stanley say a few words, please.
I'll go first.
I only have a few words to say.
Thank you. I just want to begin by acknowledging former Commissioner Ames. If you'll raise your hand, please. I think it started with you and then it transferred to your son, Jonathan here, who I remember when we started this whole program, it seems like eternity, but maybe two years ago?
Eternity.
Eternity. And it's really blossomed. And I walked in this morning, I thought our air support division expanded to see you dressed in the flight suits. And I know it's a wonderful program. We had it in Westfield Shopping Town, out in the San Fernando Valley, the third district. I attended the event. We had the cert team. We had the emergency preparedness folks. We had a wonderful opportunity for people in the community to come out and really prepare for emergency preparedness, which oftentimes we forget about. And April is the month to remember it. And now we want to give due recognition for those volunteers. And you folks fly your planes. You don't get any compensation. And you, when the alarm rings, you're out there helping us out. So we do appreciate it. And I also wanted to make sure we acknowledge the two Ames, when it started with Daddy Ames and now Jonathan Ames, to bring this around to the full circle. And all of you volunteers, all the cert people, all the folks in the air operations, we appreciate it. And from everyone, and for all those different sites where the community got to come out and actually see and prepare. And I got one of those little safety kits that I've got to make sure I'm ready whenever it strikes. So thank you very much on behalf of all the folks out in the San Fernando Valley.
Thank you very much. I am really here today as the embodiment of Hal Burnson, not myself. And I want to thank all the people. You know, for many years, Hal Burnson was the leader in this council and in the nation, really, on emergency preparedness at a local level. And we created the cert program many years ago when we saw a similar program in Japan. And working with our fire chief, we put that together. And now there has been over forty thousand people been trained by the LA City Fire Department in the cert program. It was amazing that one mayor actually wanted to discontinue the program. But we've saved the program, kept it vibrant, and we've been pushed to have a real Department of Emergency Preparedness instead of just a loose-knit board. And certainly those helicopter pilots and all you do, we know after the 1994 earthquake that we are at dangerous risk here in Los Angeles. It reminded us very vividly that we are on the earthquake faults that knew the most damage in the United States. And it is vibrant that we keep this organization alive and working. And I commend each and every one of you for keeping ready for that next earthquake, because we know it's going to happen, or another emergency that may hit the city of Los Angeles, whether it be a freak storm down in Miss Hawn's district or wherever it may be, that you will be ready to serve the people of LA with great distinction. And particularly the cert members who do it as volunteers. So thank all of you for giving and caring and being ready for when we need you one more time. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Councilmember Perry and Councilmember Smith and Zion, thank you for honoring these great people who've done great things in spending their extra time, in their extra time, to keep us all prepared. I just wanted to salute everybody. And I just see so many familiar faces who've done special things for the city for many, many years. So there's truly angels in the city of angels in these first seven rows in chambers. I want to thank you and Ellis Stanley, I want to thank you and thank our fire chief for this efforts here. And Dennis, I think it's important, too, that you did recognize Rocky and his son because of the importance that they have done in that tradition of service to the people of Los Angeles. I wanted to stand and congratulate you. Because preparedness is so important because we don't know when any challenge will meet us. This morning, I gave a press interview about challenges of transit and rail systems and trains as an MTA board member. And we hope nothing ever happens, but we know there's a challenge that it may. We hope there's another earthquake, but we know there was one in ninety-four and eighty-seven and seventy-one and fifty-one and thirty-three and oh-three in San Francisco. I only go back one century. So anyway, thank you. But can I, Jan? Is it okay? Say they could sit down or you want them all standing?
No, I think they should stand for a little bit.
Oh, they got to stand. All right, Jan. All right, good. They look so good. Thank you. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you very much.
Councilmembers, thank you all. For the members of the community that is here, what you're seeing is a committed council to preparedness. And to the council and the viewers, what you're seeing here is the community. With our budget and stuff, we couldn't do the things that are necessary. And that's why it's important to recognize the sponsors that help us make April so important for the Emergency Preparedness Fairs and activities. What you're also seeing here is the community at its best as they have gone through the training that was necessary to become community emergency response prepared community. And they are here. And in our first Emergency Response Team Challenge, a skills-based Olympiads, we were very privileged that the first and second place came from the city of Los Angeles. And we had teams from other states as well in here. And we want to have this ongoing. And what we hope our opportunity will be is to challenge our neighborhood councils to sponsor teams. And then we have playoffs, as it were, since we're in the time of playoffs right now. And we have one or two teams that will represent the city and then cities from around the country to make sure that emergency preparedness is not just an LA thing but very important to the nation. The other group this year is doctors, lawyers, and cabinet-makers, I guess. They are our air support group who have, as the council member indicated, for absolutely nothing from the city, has given back tremendously to this community, not only city departments, the sheriff's departments in this county and other counties. And I am truly delighted to be able to stand here with them and recognize them for all the efforts they've done as partners in preparedness in our community. Thank you very much.
Just add to it, the program, the volunteer program, and in particular the cert training has been something that's become an invaluable tool to the fire department. I was here not too long ago talking about the aftermath of the marathon this year. And we had a number of cert team members there that were assisting in helping runners recuperate from the unusual heat that we had during that marathon. We're learning as we go along the fire department how to better employ the cert members and bring them to bear on a number of different tasks. We'll be looking at evacuation during the upcoming brush season. Once we get our regional stations onboard, then we'll have areas for the teams to meet as well as the other volunteers. So again, they're an invaluable asset and not only to us at emergencies, but in providing that confidence out there in the community that we are prepared to meet any type of challenge. So I want to acknowledge their contribution from the fire department and look forward to seeing them to remain active as we start to develop the program more and more, as we find out all the many things that you can do to help us. So thank you very much on behalf of the fire department. Thank you very much.
Now, we're all going to go all...
In the back.
Is there more?
No.
We're all going to go in the back, all one thousand of us.
Be back for photos.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, Mr. Zion, and Mr. Smith. Colleagues, to take a temporary pause in presentations, let me ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Labange, Lutlom, Skowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vida, Goso, Weiss, Zion, Padilla. Eleven members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Unless there's an objection, what I'd like to do next is run through the agenda and dispense with consent items. So, Mr. Smith, Ms. Perry, and Mr. Zion, Mr. Labange, pay attention here. We're going to run through the agenda. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labange moves. Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for...
Mr. Weiss moves and Ms. Perry seconds.
On the regular agenda, item one is an item notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearing to June 11th.
Members, item number one is item posted for public hearing. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open and unless there's an objection, continue to June 11th. That will be the order, three weeks from today. Next item, please.
On items two through seven are street lighting district items, abandoning the proceedings or confirming the assessments.
Okay, members, items two through seven now before us. And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Members, these are ordinances. And this is first reading. We have eleven members present at this time. Mr. Clerk, do we anticipate twelve members today?
We do.
Okay, let's hold all ordinances on the desk until we have twelve members present. Next item, please.
Item eight is a public convenience or necessity item. And in Council District Nine, a motion is required to grant or deny the application.
Okay. And again, let me recognize that there are no requests from members of the public to address the council on item number eight. Public hearing is open, public hearing is closed. Ms. Perry, item number eight is now before us. A matter in your district, we do need a motion on item number eight.
I'm official, which is a matter of...
Public convenience and necessity.
We met with the property owner on this and there, I don't believe there is any further opposition to that. And I would like to let the matter go through as approved.
Okay.
All right.
Ms. Perry moves approval. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items nine through twenty-three are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports have been submitted and distributed to all members on items ten, eleven, thirteen, and twenty-three. On items nine and twelve, reports are still pending.
Okay, nine and twelve with reports still pending, let's hold those temporarily on the desk. On the balance of items nine through twenty-three, colleagues, on all items nine through twenty-three, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. And motions from the floor will be required to reopen the public hearings. I believe Ms. Hahn wanted to call item twenty-three special. Any other specials on nine through twenty-three?
Nine through twenty-three.
Mr. Zion.
Okay.
If there are no requests for specials in this batch of items, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items twenty-four through thirty-eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Mr. Parks.
We're thirteen, fourth with.
Fourth with on thirteen. Members, items twenty-four through thirty-eight now before us, and I do not have requests... requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Request for specials, beginning with Mr. Zine.
24, please.
24, called special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Do you wish to go back to presentations at this time?
Yes, let's come back to presentations. And let me recognize Mr. Weiss next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm joined here by the staff of an organization called We Spark, which is one of the most extraordinary places in the city of Los Angeles. It's on Ventura Boulevard in Sherman Oaks, and it provides support services, counseling, healing, emotional support services for cancer survivors, people who are undergoing cancer treatments, and for their families. And I'm going to tell you who's here with us today. But what I really want to tell you is that there's someone who's not here with us today, which was actually, we were very much hoping she would be here. Her name is Wendy Jo Sperber, and she's the founder of We Spark. She's one of the most extraordinary and talented and committed individuals you will ever, ever meet in this city or indeed anywhere. And she herself has been a cancer survivor since 1997. We're very saddened that Wendy has gotten sick again. And because of that, she can't be here today for the city council, for the mayor, the city attorney, and the city controller to all join in honoring her and her efforts. But her wonderful people from We Spark are here today. Nancy Allen, the program director, Janine Imperiali, the administrative director, Chris Ramsey, who does events, Mitch Holden, outreach, David Shrimp, technology, and Patsy Cho, who also works on events. They're here in solidarity with Wendy Jo. And hopefully Wendy Jo will see this on TV. And hopefully, before too long, we'll have the chance to bring Wendy Jo in here herself, because she deserves this sort of recognition. Wendy Jo was, for many years, a well-known actress in film and television. She has extraordinary streak of credits. Bosom Buddies with Tom Hanks, Will and Grace, my favorite television show, several film roles. But she was diagnosed with cancer in 1997. And since then, she has worked tirelessly on behalf of others, on behalf of so many other people in our community who are suffering from cancer and whose families are suffering as well. In the fall of 2001, she helped really spur the creation and the opening of We Spark, which stands for Support, Prevention, Acceptance, Recovery, and Knowledge. We Spark is a very, very special place. It has made the difference in so many lives. And one life that it has made an important difference in, but which unfortunately is not, we're not able to have her join us today, is that of Wendy Jo Sperber. So I hope today, everybody in Los Angeles will be thinking about Wendy Jo. And to tell us a little bit more about her and about the program, here is Nancy Allen. Nancy?
Good morning, everyone. First, I would like to thank Councilman Weiss and the council for the acknowledgement to Wendy Jo Sperber. She is an extraordinary woman, and she wanted me to thank you so much for the acknowledgement. And she's so sorry she can't be here this morning. She's really disappointed. She was looking forward to this so much. But she is very, very ill. She did ask me to say a few words about We Spark. I don't have to say many because you spoke so eloquently about it. I also would like to thank Councilman Weiss, who has been there for us since we opened our doors. And Fortuna and everyone in his office has been such a tremendous support. But I have to tell you something about Wendy, because there would really be no We Spark if it wasn't for Wendy. And I met her many, many years ago. And we were collaborators and partners in crime in another area. And she, I met her, and she is just filled with energy and creativity and spirit and passion for life and passion for everything that she does. And when she was diagnosed in 1997, she decided that she was going to take this and turn this into something positive for herself and for the other people in the city of Los Angeles. And being a mother, divorced mother with two young children, she knew that there were other people out there like her who needed and wanted support and caring and nurturing while they were going through this challenge for them and their families outside of an institutional setting. So she had a vision, and she truly is a visionary. And I remember she called me and she said, "I'm going to open a support center, and it's going to have support groups for cancer patients and for their caregivers. And there's going to be stuff for kids. And we're going to have drumming circles and yoga and qigong and writing and creative and guided imagery." And she went on and on with a list that was about this long. And she said, I said, "That's all great." And she said, "And it's all going to be free." And I said, "Gosh, Wendy, okay, this is a great plan. How are you going to do all this?" So she enlisted all of her friends and with the amazing, amazing group of volunteers, which everyone on the staff actually started as a volunteer. So our ongoing joke is, "Don't volunteer at We Spark unless you want to start working there." She truly led us, really led us, with conviction and passion, you know, step by step by step. And it's been almost three years now since we opened our doors. And we have all of those services. They are all free, amazing facilitators, and beautiful guests who come and enjoy We Spark. And We Spark is Wendy. It is, you know, her spirit and her passion. And I'm so honored to be here in her behalf and to speak for her and thank you all for the acknowledgement. As far as I'm concerned, there isn't enough acknowledgement for her. She's just an amazing, amazing woman. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you very much, Nancy. I'm going to give you a resolution from the city of Los Angeles. I'm going to ask you to do two things with it. One, I want you to please take it to Wendy, because I know she's getting treatment now. And please take it to her with our best wishes. But the second is, please bring the resolution and Wendy back here soon so that she can be here in person. We really, all of us, want to see her. And we want to see her better. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Colleagues, before the next presentation, a couple of quick orders of business. Mr. Clerk, if we can, items 10 and 11, fourth with, please. And we now have 12 members present. We have a few ordinances still on the desk, items two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Unless there's any discussion, we can open the roll on those ordinances, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved on first reading. For our next presentation, let me recognize Mr. Zine. You ready? Quick introduction, Mr. Labange.
Members, please ask the red hats of Laguna Woods to stand and be recognized. These are a group of ladies who travel and came up by train from Orange County. I met them at the Pueblo this morning on my way to City Hall, and I wanted to welcome the red hats. There's a graduate from Fairfax High in there who now lives in Laguna Woods, a graduate from Fremont, and a graduate from the great John Marshall High School of all. Please give the red hats of Laguna Woods. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. President, if I can have the students and the coaches join me from El Camino High School in the San Fernando Valley. We have an institution of higher education that has set the record for academic accomplishment beyond imagination. There was an assembly recently at El Camino, over 1,000 students, parents and fans welcoming back the woes students you see standing behind me, the decathlon winners from El Camino. Three coaches and eight students went to Boise, Idaho. They went against 361 students from 39 other U.S. high schools and a team from Columbia, Canada, to win the prestigious academic competition. First California team to win three national titles in the academic decathlon, El Camino High School. And as you travel up Valley Circle in front of the school, you will see the recognition that we, as a city council, the city of Los Angeles, have paid to that fine institution. The eight seniors brought home the school's third national title in seven years. And these students have As, Bs, and Cs. It's not just all the As students, but to participate in the decathlon, they bring A, B, and C students. The students must be ready for questions on everything from 19th century American impressionist, painter Winslow Homer, to plant cytology, cell structure, and colonial tax policies. I didn't know they had taxes in the colonial times. Not much has changed. We just pay more now. For Cassidy Ellis, where's Cassidy? Please come up here with me. Cassidy Ellis, the competition has been a special meaning because her older brother, Ramsey, had planned a tryout for El Camino's decathlon team in his senior year. And sadly, Ramsey was killed in a car accident in 1998 when Cassidy was only in the seventh grade. She wanted to fulfill what he wanted to do, and you've accomplished that on behalf of your brother.
Thank you.
El Camino has won two national championships in 1998 and 2001, and six state championships. El Camino teams are known for their distinctive black satin jackets. Do we have any of those with us today?
No.
No? Okay. Which each year are adorned with a secret motto written in a foreign language on the back. Last year's motto was George Bernard Shaw's quote, "I want to be thoroughly used up when I die," written in Aramaic, Armenian, Armenian. This year's model is in Aramaic and was not revealed to non-Aramaic speakers until after the national competition. The new model is, "The only difference between genius and insanity is 12 inches," a play by Thomas Edison's expression, which held that the difference. El Camino's team achieved the highest score, 50, is this 50,000? 50,656.8 points out of a possible 60,000. And it's my pleasure, and it was also in the daily news with all these smiling faces. You were not adorned as you are this morning in the coats and ties and lovely dresses, but you did make the news. You made the national news. You're making news here in Los Angeles. And we wanted to acknowledge each and every one of you here in city council for the wonderful accomplishment that each one of you have accomplished. Team coach, Mark Johnson. Mark Johnson. We have team coach, Melinda Owen. And I understand you're all teachers at El Camino? And decathlon participants in the past?
One.
One. Okay, that's good. Rebecca? Gesert? Rebecca? Adam Singer? You're welcome. Patrick Liu? Eric? Raz? Raz? Rashidi?
Yeah.
That's you. All right, I'm glad you know that one. Rashidi. Chris Taylor? You're welcome. Cassidy Ellis? You're welcome, dear. Jonathan Lin? Adrian Windenberg? And Gary Fox? Do we have everybody? All right, let's hear it for the decathlon, El Camino High School. Three in a row. And if the Lakers can follow your suit, then they'll be as successful in the sports field. And we're going to turn the microphone over. Who wants to have a few words of, oh, you're being pushed up, huh? They've already selected the spokesperson from the group. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Zine, President Padilla, and council members. On behalf of the El Camino Real Academic Decathlon Team, I'd like to say thank you for this honor and your support. I think one thing a lot of people tend to overlook is the importance of the support of the community and the support of the local city government for programs such as decathlon. I truly think that we could not have done this without your support and the support of our community. Just thank you and continue your support for programs such as this. Thanks.
Good morning. On behalf of the California Academic Decathlon Board of Directors, I'd like to thank you for this acknowledgement of the El Camino achievement, which is extraordinary. I also want to make the announcement, for the past three years, the state competition of academic decathlon has been held in Modesto and in Sacramento. And I wanted to say that for 2005 in March, for the next academic decathlon state competition, we will be here in Los Angeles. And we'll be looking for the support of the business and political community here in Los Angeles to help us put on this fine program. Thank you very much.
And I guarantee you, we will strongly support that academic endeavor. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Ms. Perry, for a quick introduction.
A great group of students, fifth graders from Ascot Elementary School. If you would stand up, please. They were honored this morning at the Board of Public Works. Let's give them a big hand. They were honored this morning at the Board of Public Works for their community cleanup efforts. They are here with Ms. Armand and Mr. Lee from the Board of Public Works. And I would like them to stand and be acknowledged for their commitment and hard work on behalf of these children and our community. Thank you very much and congratulations. Job well done.
For our next presentation, let me recognize Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Today, I'm pleased to have installment two of honoring the Port Police Dive Team. As you know, we honored them in the city council last Friday, but we forgot three people that really deserve to be honored as well, and that's the Los Angeles Port Police Dive Team volunteer members. And since the inception of the Port Police Dive Team in 1989, the department has relied heavily on its volunteer divers. So they insisted that we also honor the volunteers. These volunteers represent the department on dive calls, mutual aid incidents, underwater investigations. They have not asked for compensation for their time and have quietly sacrificed their personal lives as well as family and business time to ensure the well-being of the Port of Los Angeles and the surrounding communities. These divers frequently dive into the cold, murky waters of the port until 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. in the morning, under some of the most uncomfortable, undesirable, and certainly dangerous conditions. They then return home and get only three or four hours of sleep before returning to their regular lives and work. The experience, skill, and knowledge of these volunteers have brought respect, professionalism, and acknowledgement to the Port Police Dive Team. As a result of the terrorist attacks on September 11, 2001, request for dive team services has risen dramatically. Without the assistance and dedication of these volunteer divers, the Port Police Dive Team would not have been able to answer many of its calls for service. We are truly grateful and the entire city, particularly those of us who live closer... and the entire city, particularly those of us who live close to the Port of Los Angeles, owe a huge debt of gratitude to these volunteer divers. You all deserve this recognition this morning, and I'm honored to present you with these certificates of appreciation. And I'm going to have Officer Mike Raycheck say a few words. But first, I'd like to present to Jean Fenton, Carl Abagian, and Steve D. Napoli. Did I say that right?
Denopoli.
Denopoli. These certificates. Jean?
Right here.
Thank you so much. Carl?
Carl wasn't able to be.
Carl wasn't able to come. And Steve?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you want to say something, and then we'll present the other one.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Lieutenant Mike Raycheck with the Los Angeles Port Police Dive Team. And it truly is to be, truly is an honor to be here today presenting our volunteers with this, with this resolution or commendation. They do a great service to our community, as Councilwoman Hahn just said. And they put in, they have made hundreds of dives over the last 10 years in the Port of L.A. and have saved the Port Police hundreds of man-hours with their, their continued dedication and service to the port. So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to them, and it is truly an honor for us to be here today. Thank you.
And is Michael here?
Yes.
And I have one more. Michael Capadano, who is part of the Los Angeles Port Police Dive Operation, was unable to be at the city council. Can I say why?
injured.
Okay, because of health reasons. But we wanted to make sure that we did not miss the opportunity to also thank Michael for his service on the Port Police Dive Team. We're glad you're here. We're glad you're well. We're glad you've got years of service left ahead of you. So.
Thank you.
Do you want to get a picture?
Thank you.
Presentation, Councilmember Parks. Councilmember Hahn, are you complete? You finished?
No.
No? Well, any more presentations? Okay, Councilmember Parks then. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to bring up three people that just played a major role in the Eighth District Cinco de Mayo program in the, at the Rita Walters Learning Center, and that's Ms. Serrano, Mr. Delagarza, and also Ms. Griffey. We all here? All right. And Antonio, come on up here. First of all, for many of us that, I guess, a little younger than I am, but basically remembers Ms. Sakaro Serrano, and we're here to honor her not only for her participation at the most recent Cinco de Mayo presentation, but she's the first and only Latina host of the prestigious Hall of Fame KCOP Los Angeles television show called Romper Room. For 14 years, from '75 to '89, she served as the Romper Room teacher in Los Angeles. Her classroom students affectionately referred to her as Ms. Sakal, and she was committed to ensuring that the program featured four- to five-year-old kids of every ethnicity. Romper Room ran almost in every major market in the United States and was broadcast from 1954 until 1980. So today, we're here to honor her for her participation and being a role model for many of our young children in the City of Los Angeles. And we were interested in not only the fact that she was honored recently at the Rita Walters Center, but to bring her to the city council and let her know just how much we appreciate what she's done for our children throughout this city. And we'd like to ask Ms. Serrano to come up and accept this acknowledgement.
Thank you so much.
Come on up here.
Thank you very much. It's really an honor and a thrill for me to be here today because as a teenager growing up in Lincoln Heights, I remember coming down here to a city council meeting and being quite impressed with, with all of the leaders and all of the business of running the city. And I always remembered in doing Romper Room that you never know who you might meet or what they might say. That really sets you on the road to participating in the life of the city. And I wanted to thank you all for everything that you do, all the children that you affect, all of the campaigns and organizations and, and all the goodwill that you do in each of our communities, from Boyle Heights to, throughout the entire city. And again, I just want to thank you for this moment to say back to you that you are in the minds and the memories of all of the children who are now the leaders today. Thank you.
Next person is Andres Delagarza. He also brought a contingent of young people to the Rita Walters Center. And we're, we're recognizing him for his dedication as an advisor at Roosevelt High School and the Forkelauriak Ensemble. This high school ensemble is a remarkable group of young men and women dancers who offer cultural artistic performance throughout the city. Through the leadership of Mr. Delagarza, they performed at an Eighth District event. And this is not the first time. He's been within the Eighth District for the, at least four different occasions. But we also remembered and must be commended for providing the same service in addition to Roosevelt High, also at Wilson High. He also maintains all of the uniforms for all of the dancers in mariachi costumes that he comes forward in the community. He travels throughout the city and basically is committed to enlisting the parents for transportation of these young people for these programs. And so behalf of the council today in the Eighth District specifically, we'd like to thank him for being a great part of developing programs for young people, but particularly bringing forth an outstanding Cinco de Mayo program at the Rita Walters Center.
Councilman Parks and members of the city council, on behalf of those students from Roosevelt High School, I'd like to thank you. I'm only their mentor. They're the ones that do all the work. But again, thank you very much, and we hope you continue their
The next person, last but not least, is a person that is a major volunteer in the Eighth District. She's the president of the 79th Street Block Club in the Eighth District. She's an outstanding citizen, committed to helping the community. She works in the evening on her regular job with the Department of Water and Power, but she spends all of her daytime hours addressing the needs of her community. She's a volunteer at the Rita Walters Learning Center, and where she makes it her business to ensure that promotional flyers and information is sent out in the community so that people are aware of all of the activities that's going on in the Vermont-Manchester corridor. She, in her tireless effort, distributed flyers for the Cinco de Mayo program and helped generate a standing-room-only turnout for this event. She's equally committed to the community, aware of all sorts of benefiting programs and social events that enhance the community. So I just wanted to honor today Ms. Griffey, who is one of our most outstanding volunteers in the Eighth District.
Councilman Parks and other members of the city council, I'd just like to say
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Now, Mr. Parks, did you get a chance to introduce our special guest this morning?
Oh, yes. I have a very special guest in my family, a person that needs no introduction. My father's here today, Earl Parks, a 38-year employee for the City of Los Angeles through the Harbor Department, later the CLA's office, then the Housing, L.A. Housing Authority, and then went on to work for a number of years with the State Department of Justice. But we just call him Dad, and that's Earl Parks.
Welcome. Mr. Clerk, this concludes presentations for today's meeting. Next item, please.
Now would be time for comments from the public on items not appearing on today's council agenda.
Okay, members, this is general public comment, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Before calling up the first speakers, can we please have some quiet back here behind the horseshoe? Can we please have some quiet here behind the horseshoe? And remember, to the best extent possible, if we can listen with utmost attention to the following individuals. Will Mr. Kay Nagao please come forward, followed by Brady Westwater, Charlie Wu, Vicente Cuara, Nadine Diaz, and other speakers to follow? If you form a line behind the podium, we'd appreciate it. And if the clerk would please put up a 10-minute clock.
Hello, my name is Kay Nagao, and I'm a member of J-Town Voice. We're a multi-generational organization active in the Little Tokyo community, and we're also a member of the Little Tokyo Community Council. We've had, we've heard some rumors that there might be a verbal motion today to introduce, a motion to permanently locate the Parker Center to the Mangrove Block in Little Tokyo on First and Alameda. And we're here today to strongly oppose that verbal motion. It will undermine a year-long process which city council member Perry, the chief legislative analyst Ron Deaton, and the Little Tokyo community have undertaken to have a mutually beneficial solution. On April 27, the Little Tokyo Community Council voted for a community-backed development that would revitalize the Little Tokyo community and that would positively benefit the downtown area and connect the Nishi Buddhist temple to the rest of Little Tokyo. We strongly urge the city council to not approve any verbal motion today. This past Wednesday on May 19, 150 residents, community members, business owners, and workers attended the city council member here, meeting here, where the full council voted on a three-week process to make sure that all stakeholders' views were included. We hope and urge the city council to honor this process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Brady Westwater, please.
My name is Brady Westwater. I'm vice president of Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. I'm speaking for myself, and I just found out last night the Parker Center issue may be revisited today with no public notice, the public not allowed to speak on the issue at the time the issue is being brought up, and not allowing the neighborhood councils to even know about this, much less weigh in on it. I think it's ironic that tomorrow is the Congress of Neighborhood Councils at the convention center, and I guarantee if this motion is introduced today about the neighborhood councils being allowed to know about it, they'll be the number-one topic at tomorrow's conference. Thank you.
Mr. Wu.
Charlie Wu, I'm the president of the Historical Cultural Neighborhood Council, where the First and Alameda site is located. And again, also urge the city council to let the process go forward as you decided last Wednesday, and please do not short-circuit the process. I think the community needs a discussion, a dialogue, and the community was here last Wednesday, and they walk away thinking that going, the city council is going to certain directions. And I don't think it's quite fair that now they've gone home that you might reconsider that. I think this is a matter of public trust, the trust that you all need to be an efficient representative of the city. I hope you respect the process, respect the neighborhood councils and community opinion, and let the process go forward as you decided last Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next group of speakers are, on behalf of the South Central Farmers, Vicente Cuara, Nadine Diaz, Ediogenes, Lupianos Rumbos, Jesús Espazamasias, Miguel Angel Perez, and Gonzalo Garcia Cortez. If they can speak as a group, please, and I'll give you a few minutes.
Señor presidente municipal.
President and council people.
Como campesinos que somos.
As farmworkers that we are, we come to fight to let us work and give us the land.
Porque salen las alimentaciones para los niños y señores grandes.
Because the food comes out of there for the children and older people.
Porque el campesino la trabaja.
Because the farmworker works it.
Ahora.
Now.
Por eso andamos luchando.
That's what we are fighting.
Para que nos dejen esas tierras.
So that you leave us that land.
Para que haya que comer.
So that there's food to eat.
Todo.
The whole world.
También este grupo de niños que estuvieron detrás de nosotros.
Also this group of children that were behind us.
Quiero que por favor.
I want you to please help them.
Para que estudien esos niños.
So they can study those children.
Y no les pase lo que me pasó a mí.
And it doesn't happen what happened to me because my upbringing was very hard.
Porque mi crianza fue muy dura.
And that's why I'm asking you, Mr. President, and council people.
Por eso le pido señor presidente.
Help that youth.
Ayuden esa juventud.
So that there are no corruptions in this country.
Ahora.
Now.
Si usted ayuda a esos niños.
If you help those children.
Van a agarrar una carrera.
They're going to get a career.
Para que se mantengan.
So that they can support themselves easily.
Fácilmente y no anden en la calle.
And they are not on the streets.
Atiendo perjuicio.
You imprint it, and that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. You know what may actually help the translation? If they can, you know, speak for 15 seconds and then translate. The simultaneous is making it a little confusing here. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Nadine Diaz, and I'm a University of Southern California graduate student. And I'm here on behalf of the graduate students to again tell you that we support the South Central Farmers located at 41st and Alameda. All of you, many of you are not listening. Tomorrow, there is an event. The Sierra Club will be visiting the farm, and the farmers will provide tours for everyone to visit the farm. And there will also be food and also drink for everyone to share. It is imperative that we all support the South Central Farmers and their right to self-determination and the right to a democratic process, and also the right to feed their families and their
the South Central Farmers. Everybody here, like to have your attention, please. Please. This is public comment. It's really important. If there's going to be a democratic process that people pay attention, we pay attention to you when you speak. All right? Thank you. I think it's important that we all wake up every morning and breathe healthy air, do we not? While the South Central Farm has 500 trees that cleans the air that we all breathe. This is an environmental fact. The South Central Farm is not a joke. It's nothing to turn your back on. This is a very serious situation. It's a very human situation. Los Angeles benefits from the South Central Farm and the question of a crime-free area of 14 acres that 330 families share. There is no graffiti there. There is education there. There is family. There is culture. There is understanding of feeding the world in themselves. We must pay attention. The campesinos that spoke before me are speaking from their heart. They're speaking from their souls and their hands in the dirt that grow the food we all eat every day. And again, I will say, aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Tierra libertad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speakers under general public comment are Kim Benjamin, Joe Lumer, Santonia Amberly, and Walworth, and other speakers, if time allows.
Hi, thank you. Kim Benjamin, I'm with the Historic and Cultural Neighborhood Council as well as a board member of the Little Tokyo Community Council. And as you know, our positions are clear on the matter of the Parker Center situation, motions 34 and 35, 55 and 19. You saw two days ago 130 participants from the community come in here, mostly seniors. They were here with this sign. You might You might recall that. Our positions are fairly strong and fairly clear. Your position to move this forward in an expedited manner might be premature. I'd like to just point out several things beyond the notion of public trust, which is critical here. You have a community council, a neighborhood council. You want to bring them in and hear what they have to say. Don't disregard their opinion in the process. It's critical you listen to them. The three weeks that's been voted on by you all at, two days ago, to provide better information than's currently available is actually a critical question. For example, are you aware that you have a 5% inflation factor in the Bureau of Engineering's report for the cost of the products to go into the new building? Do you know that steel, drywall, wood has gone up 40% in the last six months? How could you possibly have a report dated March 2004 based on data that's three to five months preceding to that that doesn't incorporate that inflation price? If in fact steel is only 15% of the cost of a $300 million new building, and it's $45 million, and it's gone up 40%, where are you going to get that extra $16 to $18 million? That's just where it begins. Has anyone here commissioned a study from the LA Police Department on the efficiency-loss factor associated with the new building versus the Transamerica building? Without that study, how can you make an accurate decision as to whether or not the old building, 30 or 40 years old, appropriately retrofitted, may not accommodate all of your needs, besides a setback issue which Ms. Perry has spoken to previously? I'll leave you just two other comments that I think are material, which is why you should not rush to judgment, and rush to judgment seems to be the case here. As it relates to the cost of architectural design, do you know that you're losing $6 million more by building a new building than by retrofitting the old building? And Councilman Cardenas, you asked a question about asbestos, correct? If you read the contract between the seller, Canyon Partners, and the buyer, the city, 100% of the cost for remediation in accordance with Uniform Building Code California by a state-licensed contractor must be paid for, born, and completely cleaned precedent to you taking title of the property, along with life safety issues, paid for, born by the seller precedent. So those issues are critical items that may have not been properly communicated during the meeting two days ago, and they should not be a material concern to you. My comment in final is, please, give us the three weeks, commission the LAPD efficiency study, let's gather more information before we rush to make a decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Before calling forward the next speaker, colleagues, members of the council and your staff, it's getting very crowded and very noisy back here. If your staff and their conversations do not need to be immediately behind you, please ask them to excuse themselves through the rear of chambers. Mr. Lumer's our next speaker. Joe Lumer here. All right, and after Mr. Lumer, San Antonio Amberly, if you'd come forward as well.
Mr. President, council members, my name is Joe Lumer. My family have been stakeholders in the historic corps since the early 1950s. My understanding is that the motion that I heard about last night at 9:00 PM may not be made today, so I'm going to make my comments extremely brief, only to say that I think the debate that we had here last Wednesday was extremely exciting, spirited, and honest. The chambers were full of people from the community, and today, of course, we have empty chambers here, and so I just want to recommend, and hopefully that you will agree, that when we have these kinds of discussions in the public, that they are made in the full light of day, and that we all have an opportunity to express ourselves. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, my name is San Antonio Amberly, and I am a resident in the historic downtown area that is being affected by the decision that was made on Wednesday to reconsider. I am particularly urging that a sense of balance and city pride be part of the consideration. And city pride is an example of refurbishing a building such as this and not saying that this building is no longer efficient, therefore we have to build a new one, because this is a beautiful building, and it is an example of what LA could represent. If we take pride in our 28 national and city monuments that are located in the historic downtown, I would really recommend that that be part of your economic studies, and the collateral damage that goes along with that, with the amenities that would be pulled out because of businesses not wanting to invest in an area, included which the Little Tokyo's support of having the Parker Center relocated to the Transamerica building because of the cultural hole that would be caused by that, that also needs to be considered. So it's, again, a question of balance. Balance what the LAPD needs, balance what the Little Tokyo needs. They need more of their area protected, and the historic downtown also needs their area protected, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, we have three more cards. Ann Walworth, Mary Ping, and Jonathan Gerald. If this is all about the same issue, and I think the point has been very well made, then if you're willing to either keep it very brief or forego your opportunity here, we have an agenda still to get to, but you're welcome to come forward.
Yes, my name is Jonathan Gerald. I'm a board member of the Los Angeles River Artists and Business Association. I'm also on the board of the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council, and for the past year I've been a community representative to the Public Safety Oversight Committee. I just want to ask the council to please take the time that clearly they need to consider the costs of the relative proposals for a new public safety complex, and also give the community an opportunity to give some input into the process. The community has been very much involved in this process for a year and a half, and it seems like some of the council members are not aware of the community's concerns, what the alternate potential uses for the property at First and Alameda are, and some of the concerns that the council has raised seem to be contrary to what we've heard. There's a concept, for instance, that was raised the other day that somehow proximity equates to accountability. Clearly doesn't apply within this building, certainly doesn't apply to what's going on just two blocks away at El Pueblo, certainly seems to suggest that there isn't much accountability in the valley, and I would suggest that that premise is not one to be seriously taken. I would ask that you regard all the alternatives as potentially viable, and look at the comparison between the costs, and again, the potential alternate uses that the community has been working with the city to consider for over a year. Thank you.
Thank you. And if that is it, then Mary Ping and Walworth will add your cards to the file. This will conclude general public comment for today's meeting. Ms. Perry, did you wish to be heard at this time?
I just wanted to thank everybody who came down today and was so responsive on this issue, and I want to thank Mr. Zine for being so gracious and sharing with me that he has reconsidered his position, and I really, really want to publicly thank him and acknowledge his graciousness and sensitivity to an already complex situation. Thank you so much, Dennis.
You knew that was coming.
Okay, take a photograph. It will last longer, yes.
Mr. Clerk, next order of business, please.
Mr. President, items nine and 12 were being held on the desk for committee report, and that report has now been submitted.
Okay, members' reports on nine and 12 have now been distributed. Unless there is a desire for discussion on this item or both of these items, we're ready for a vote. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll on items nine and 12. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. That brings us to item 23, call special by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, and I know we might have some speakers on this issue, but what I'm asking us to do today is to support a bill in Congress that will correct an injustice that has been inflicted upon a group of World War II veterans, the United States Merchant Marines. The World War II Merchant Mariners suffered the highest casualty rate of any of the branches of service while they delivered troops, tanks, food, airplanes, fuel, and other needed supplies to every theater of war. Compared to the large number of men and women serving in World War II, the numbers of Merchant Mariners were small, but their chances of dying during service was extremely high. Enemy forces sank over 800 ships between 1941 and 1944 alone. Unfortunately, this group of brave men were denied their rights under the GI Bill of Rights, which Congress enacted in 1945. All those who served in the Army, the Navy, the Marine Corps, the Air Force, or the Coast Guard were recipients of benefits under the GI Bill. The United States Merchant Marine was not included. Colleagues, the Merchant Marine became the forgotten service. For four decades, no effort was made to recognize the contribution made by this branch of armed forces. The fact that merchant seamen had borne arms during wartime in defense of their country did not seem to matter. No legislation to benefit merchant seamen was passed by Congress until 1988, when the Seamen Acts of 1988 finally granted them the status of veteran, and then a watered-down GI Bill of Rights. Some portions of the GI Bill have never been made available to veterans of the Merchant Marine. And while it's impossible to make up for over 40 years of unpaid benefits, HR 3729 will acknowledge the service of the Merchant Marine and offer compensation for years and years of lost benefits. HR 3729 is entitled "The Belated Thank You to the Merchant Mariners of World War II, Act of 2004," and it would pay each eligible veteran a monthly benefit of $1,000, and this payment would also go to their surviving spouse and children. The average age of a Merchant Marine veteran is now around 81 years. Many have outlived their savings. A monthly benefit to compensate for the loss of nearly a lifetime of ineligibility for the GI Bill would be of comfort and would provide some measure of security for veterans of the Merchant Marine. I urge you to support me in this legislation. We can't make up for lost years, but we can fix an injustice by urging Congress to pass HR 3729. Tomorrow, May 22nd, is Merchant Marine Veteran Day. It will be celebrated all across the country. I have in San Pedro the largest Merchant Mariner memorial wall in the country. I probably have the largest celebration tomorrow at 10:00 AM in the country. I want to be able to make as a part of my remarks the fact that this council unanimously passed this resolution and urged Congress to pass HR 3729. Thank you. And I think we have some members of the public who are here to speak on this.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, and we do have three speaker cards. Public hearing has been held on this item, but I think it'd be an honor to hear from Floyd Hayes, Clint Mclish, and Bill Schwab, if you would maybe jointly come to the microphone here and offer any comments you desire.
I want to thank you for letting us come here and express our gratitude after going back to the Civil War of this country, and before that, we had John Paul Jones and John Barry. They were privateers, and you know what a privateer is? A privateer is he owns the ship, and the tier is that he's working for the government and go out and do his shooting. Well, anyway, we go back a long time. We're the oldest branch of the service in the United States, and it's just like Rodney Dangerfield said, we don't get any respect. We, myself, I was born here in the city of Los Angeles. I'm probably one of the few in the eighties, probably in this whole building, and I'd just like to say that I've lived in Wilmington most of my life. I sold newspapers on the waterfront, became a merchant seaman, and I went for 44 years. I went through World War II from day one till day end, and then I was very active going to Vietnam, and averaged about three trips a year to Vietnam from '57 up until '71. Well, that's beyond the point. I just want to say that I think we, as merchant seamen, did our duty. When we were sunk out at sea during World War II, there was no big bands or any greetings for us to be greeted by, or any medals put on us. We just went back to our Union Hall or a place of shipment and grounded their ship and went back to sea. Maybe we survived, and maybe we didn't. But anyway, I think these men out of 250,000 seamen that worked during World War II, there's less than 10,000 left. I am now 79. I was born here on College Street in Los Angeles, the old college clinic, the Pico Union District. I was only about two years old when we moved to Wilmington, and I'd like to say Wilmington is the heart of the Los Angeles Harbor, and I donated 15 pins to council people here, and I wish you would wear them in memory of all these merchant seamen that gave their best for this country. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Clint Mclish. I'm a product of the Los Angeles school system and a Merchant Marine veteran. I graduated from John Burroughs Junior High School, went to LA High School, transferred to Frank Wiggins Trade School, graduated radio in 1944, rode the red car to San Pedro, signed on my first ship at 16 years old, the Kettleman Hills. We were promised benefits. I wanted to go to college. I eventually did. I graduated with honors in 1976. I went over a period of years in my time off, and I appreciate all the effort that everyone is making to get this bill passed, and particularly the good speech that Councilman Hahn made. We thank you.
I'm Floyd Hayes. I'm with the American Merchant Marine Veterans. I'm a World War II Merchant Marine veteran, and I served with the Army and a retired police sergeant, and don't hold that against me. But I want to remind everyone that the Merchant Marine seamen, they're the oldest branch of service. They started before 1775, and then there was no Navy, no Marine, no Army. So merchant seamen go back in history nearly 250 years. Merchant seamen have been involved in every war, conflict, police action, whatever you want to call it, from gaining independence in England, 1775, to this day here. There's merchant ships, merchant seamen over in Iraq right now. The greatest secret of World War II was the loss of ships and the merchant seamen. No accurate records were kept back then. It's taken over 60 years research to estimate our losses. Of all the sources of information, one of the best sources on the loss of ships, believe it or not, was from Germany. We had people go over, talk to the German U-boat commanders and go over their records. They knew every ship by its name, the date, time, minute, and the exact location where they sank it. Lot of them right out of New York Harbor there. And in statistics, as Janet said, it figures about one in every 26 merchant seamen was killed. And for those of you around, when we came back from World War II, there was no brass bands out there waiting for us. We was the so-called heroes in dungarees. And they did receive a lot of promises, but they sure weren't fulfilled. So I want to thank the, for the opportunity to come up here and put my two cents in, and Janet especially. You stole my thunder here, Gal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've now returned for additional council discussion. Mr. Ludlow, followed by Mr. Labange and Mr. Parks.
Mr. Parks first, I think that'd be important.
My item, the last thing you need to do is turn the mic up for me. We're fine. I'm fine. I don't need the item reconsidered. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labange is deferring to you first.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Janice Hahn for assisting me in my inheritance. This is something that, this is something I think that a group of people, merchant seamen, for years have been ignored. They certainly paid a major price during World War II, the number of lives lost. To not have them at the same level of benefits for other military service personnel is a travesty, and I think that this is a long time coming, and just want to say thank you to all of you. In fact, one of the greatest evenings I spent recently was out at the merchant seamen's location, and the stories they talk about and some of the things that they did that are very heroic are just commendate conversations for them, where they were in the war, they lost friends. Several of them, I think, when we talked about it, basically lied about their age in order to go to the military, that they were there at seventeen years old and are just below the age limit. But that's the kind of dedication that we have. So I just want to say thank you, Dad, for coming down, and thank you for all the merchant seamen, and certainly we hope this all gets resolved because it's a group that truly deserves that kind of recognition.
Mr. Labange.
I want to just follow Councilmember Parks and ask his father, Earl Parks, to stand because I think it's very important. Here's a father of a council member who is a great merchant seaman. Give him a big hand and... I know Earl was a great friend of John Farrell and Hal Burnson and a lot of the people who were here before, so it's wonderful to have you down, and all the merchant seamen. And men, you spoke greatly about who's fighting for you here, and Janice Hahn, stealing the words out of your mouth, helping to direct the proper action to make a difference and get Congress to support these measures. We don't really realize, we don't, all of us. We're maybe experts in certain things, reserve police officers, and passionate about the river, passionate about people and involved at the police department, but these people right here, the gentleman at sixteen years old who went to Frank Wiggins and then went down on the red car to sign up and took off and became a merchant seaman, paid a great debt of service to this country, we only owe him the same. So I just call to salute Janice Hahn for this efforts here and to support this House bill, and I want to say it, call it quickly, 3729, H.R. 3729. So if any members of the public that are listening right now, call your congressional representatives and ask them to support House Bill 3729 to salute our merchant Marines who did the great job all the time and very, and much in harm's way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen aye.
That is approved. We'll send that matter forthwith to the mayor. And before coming to item 24, Mr. Ludlow, you had a motion on item number nine?
No, I'm fine.
On 12?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine. I'm in good shape, but I will take the opportunity to say thank you.
And I'll take the opportunity to say you're welcome. That brings us to item 24, item called special by Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I can have staff come forward on this matter. Deferred Compensation Administration Plan, we have representatives from the City Attorney's Office and the Personnel Department on this matter.
Good morning.
This comes out of the Personnel Committee, and I've got some questions dealing with this. Number one question is, how much do we have invested in deferred compensation? How many dollars?
In the deferred compensation account, approximately $1.8 billion.
$1.8 billion?
Correct.
And that money is employees' money that they contribute, and this investment plan gives them a separate retirement plan?
It's 100% employee contribution, yes.
Okay. And the employees pay all the costs for that particular program?
There's fees for the program. The employees pay them.
And we select the providers for those programs and monitor those programs on behalf of our employees?
That's correct.
And all city employees are eligible for deferred comp?
All, yes, all employees contributing to a retirement plan.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. The question I have on the items, there's four items. The first is the continuation of a five-year contract with Hartford to continue providing investment management services through June 2009. Will they be able to obtain new members into that plan, or is it just maintaining the existing membership?
Technically, they can have new members join the plan. However, most members know that this is not a good investment option, and almost all the money in that plan is older money. Other employees tend to go to the other stable value account.
Okay. So quite, the concern I have is there were many problems with Hartford and their administration of the plan, the investment, the return of dollars for the employees, a lot of dissatisfaction, and there was an agreement made that they would continue with the existing members. The problem is, if we continue this through 2009 and let new members join, not knowing the negative consequences, how do we inform our employees that this is not a worthy investment and at the same time protect the people who are already invested in there who can't get out without substantial penalties?
The contracts are already in place that had those negative impacts. They have been mostly reduced. By the end of 2009, they will all be gone.
Where are they going?
Well, what's happening is the money in Hartford is being transferred to a stable value account within Hartford, 20% every year. By the end of 2000, by the end of the contract in 2009, that money will all be in a stable value fund. It will be different from the current Hartford account.
Okay. So all our employees will then not receive any negative...
There will be absolutely no penalties at the end of 2009.
But what troubles me is employees not knowing the negative consequences could sign up for that. How do we inform them that this is not the best investment for their dollars?
Their only negative consequence would be if the city terminated the contract.
Right.
Not if the employees retire and take the money out. That's fine. But if the city terminates the contract, then there's a negative impact.
On the employees, and that's why we're not terminating the contract?
Correct.
Okay. And the second one regarding a six-month extension with Gallard Capital Management, why couldn't we get that RFP done in a timely manner and not have to extend the contract?
Basically, the RFP wasn't a timely manner. The issue is, there's a different stop point on the Hartford contract and the Galliard contract.
Right.
There's a six-month lag there. What we want to do is, once the Hartford general account assets have been fully transferred to the stable value fund, the city's fixed income assets will be all maintained in a like fashion. Then, the board believes that it makes the most sense to extend Galliard six months and send out to bid for stable value fund all at one time. We're going to be able to leverage the city's buying power by having two contracts out at one time, and we're going to combine them into one.
Okay. And then on the third one, the Great West Retirement Services, again extending that for additional six months. What's the purpose of that?
The purpose to extend it six months is, we're in the final stages of the RFP right now. We have the proposals in, and we're, the board will hear it at their next meeting, at the end of the month. The reason to extend that is to be fair to the people who made the proposals that are not the current vendor. If the current vendor gets the contract again, we won't need the six-month extension. If it goes to a new vendor, it's a very difficult transition period, and it means transitioning $1.8 billion.
Right.
We need six months to transition.
And then I understand a document was received because what I'm trying to do is avoid any litigation from the city, for the city being sued for not doing this in a proper fashion. The City Attorney's Office, I understand, was involved in some review to make sure everything was done in a proper fashion, and you're the representative from the City Attorney's Office on that? If you can comment on that, please. I guess it was a competing vendor who was brought forth an issue regarding the RFP or the proprieties of the RFP.
I'm not aware of the specific document that you're referring to, but my office has been involved in the review of the RFP documents and in the process that the deferred compensation staff has, has been generating, and the process up to this point has comported with standards of fairness that our office seeks to ensure.
Okay. So everything's being monitored by the City Attorney's Office to make sure that if someone who's bidding for that doesn't receive that, that we are on solid ground as to justify where we're taking $1.8 billion for an investment? Because I'm sure a lot of investment firms are interested in taking advantage of that, and there's a concern that we do it in a proper fashion for our employees and for the taxpayers, since the taxpayers have to pay for litigation if that takes place.
That's correct.
Okay. And is a five-year contract normal in these deferred comp matters, or short-term contracts the norm?
Because of the complexity of the contracts, because of the amount of money involved, it's not unusual to have a five-year contract for services such as the ones that the deferred compensation staff is seeking.
And the board, does the board have more jurisdiction or more authority than it had before? Are we including that in any of our contracts?
Does it?
The board that oversees the deferred comp?
The board that oversees deferred comp is, is in the process of, it will be involved in the process of reviewing and selecting proposers, and under the administrative code, they do have jurisdiction to do that.
Okay. So other than the problems that we had with the Hartford plan in the past and poor return on investments, the management of the operations, and I understand there's two programs that we have now? Mr. Soundman. Mr. Soundman.
Help me get that.
I guess he tunes out. That high pitch was coming back. Okay.
Is that better?
No, closer.
Closer.
Just the reverse, I guess. There were no other problems with the program other than what we had in the past with the Hartford plan and the poor return on investments?
That's correct.
Okay. And we currently have how many plans available to employees?
We have one administrator. In the past, we had two. In 1999, we changed to one administrator, and we have a variety of programs available, investment options in there.
And what?
Twenty-two investment options.
Pardon me?
Twenty-two, twenty-two different, twenty-two different...
We have twenty-two different...
Investment options from which to choose.
And the management of that is with Hartford currently, and who else?
No, only, only one company. Well, in terms of the investment management, we have a number of different providers. We have Washington Mutual Bank, Hartford Life Insurance Company. We've, we also have a couple of the American Funds. So there's, there's a long list of funds which, which are...
Available.
Which, yes.
Okay. And what outreach do we do for our city employees to inform them of those programs? Or is it the provider that does that?
It's... They do that, yes.
The one investment, the one administrator does the outreach. We, there's hundreds and hundreds of meetings each year for city employees to join the plan. We have, how many thousands? We have 22,000?
Thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand employees enrolled in this plan. So our outreach effort is huge.
Okay. So everyone from...
There's a quarterly newsletter also that goes to everyone who's in the plan.
Thank you. So everyone from Personnel side, everyone from the City Attorney's side believes that we're doing the proper management, the proper oversight, the proper RFPs, the proper review of the deferred comp programs? I just want to assure the critics that everyone is on board and above board.
We're very conservative in this. We know it's a high impact on employees, and we're very aware of that.
Okay. Anything else from you? Because you've settled my questions, and I want it in a public hearing because I've had some questions brought to me, and I want it to be on the record in a public hearing. So if anyone was critical, it would be public knowledge that everything was done in a proper fashion. Anything else? Okay. And we have a deadline on this Tuesday?
Yes.
So we approve it today, then it moves forward.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you for the additional time.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Labange.
Mr. Zine, thank you for the questions. On all issues related to deferred comp or pensions, is the CIO, I know the CIO is talking, but you can speak for the CIO on this, how often do you check? Because I don't want to have a situation where we're overwhelming, you know, I believe in paying people well, I believe in, and good, great careers with the city of Los Angeles, and then a well-earned pension, but sometimes we've read where there's pensions and other programs that overwhelm the ability to serve the public. You understand what I'm saying? How often do you check that, and how often do you report back to council or through the city process on the checks of this? Because there was one question I had, I believe it's not correct, but they talked about a 90% pension, but that's, you'd have to work 45 years to get a 90% pension or something like this?
Right. All right. Well, the deferred compensation plan is a supplement to that, your pension plan with the city. Every year, the city council receives an annual report from the Board of Deferred Compensation Administrators to let you know how the plan is doing. Every month, we have investment providers come into the board to report on their particular investment. Out of those 22 options that employees have, monthly, we're checking on those. So there's tremendous oversight, and we report to council once a year.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll talk to you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Final comments? Well, let's take a vote on it first. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen aye.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Mr. Smith.
Mr. President, I just rise real quick to introduce some very special guests that are here today. We have a whole bunch of young people from Northridge, from Topeka School, Elementary School, that are playing hooky today, but they were very smart to bring their teachers, Mr. Ruiz and Mr. Bellington, with them. So all the kids from Topeka, please stand and say hello. Stand up, say hi. They're here for a tour today. And I welcome, have a great tour. Hope you have fun here at City Hall today, and I know my good friend, colleague, Mr. Vera Agosa has a few words also.
I also...
Mr. Vera Agosa.
I also would like to welcome all the students from Topeka Avenue Elementary, and Alyssa, where are you? Alyssa Blackman? There she is. Good to see you. Welcome to City Hall.
Now, Mr. Vera Agosa, you got to do this right. Who is Alyssa?
Oh, Alyssa Blackman happens to be Jimmy Blackman's daughter, my Chief of Staff. But more importantly, she's my, one of my best friends.
All right. Look at that proud Papa over there. Mr. Labange.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. It's nice to have these children here, but it's a special day coming up this Sunday because one of our very own is going to celebrate a birthday, and I just want to ask that we all rise and salute Wendy Grule, who'll have her birthday this Sunday, which is special every year, and I know Dean and Big Tom will enjoy that. Happy birthday to you, Wendy Grule.
Happy birthday, Wendy. Before hearing other announcements, Mr. Clerk, do we have any housekeeping today?
Mr. President, Special One has been introduced by Councilmember Parks, seconded by Councilmember Ludlow, and the City Attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, the Convention Center Department discovered a $300,000 shortage in its payroll account. Immediate action is required because a fund transfer must take place no later than Monday in order to meet next Wednesday's payroll. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay. Any members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen aye.
Special One is now before us on the motion itself. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is simply a transfer of funds within the department. It's not an impact on general funds, and it certainly is critical that they make next Wednesday's payroll.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on Wednesday, July 28, and Friday, July 30, for city business meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on Friday, June 4, and Friday, July 2, for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Vera Agosa moves. Mr. Garcetti is excused.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Members, this is the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Labange.
Tomorrow, we're going to have a big cleanup in NoHo in North Hollywood there, and all members of the public should gather near Legashim and Chandler, right in there for a great cleanup. Also, because it covers my area too, but it's in Misakowski's district. Cindy, you know about the big open house? You can announce the open house tomorrow for West Los Angeles sanitation, and it's a great fun... the open house tomorrow for West Los Angeles sanitation, and it's a great fun day where you bring your family to the sanitation yard. I know my son, Charles, who knows the difference between a blue, a black, and a green can, and a bulky item truck, and a regular truck, and he's only six years old, Ms. Han, he is very much in tune, but it's a wonderful thing to come to the open house and work with the, meet the drivers who collect our recyclables and yard waste, as well as our garbage, and also get your chance to have your family, children, look at some of these great trucks that the city has and operates. That's tomorrow, an open house between 9:00 and 3:00 at the West Los Angeles Yard on 2027 Stoner. And finally, LAPD Valley Traffic, are you doing that, Dennis? It has an open house tomorrow, and Wendy Gruhl is going to be there too, at Woodley Park for Traffic Safety Fair. A lot of good activities going on tomorrow in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three announcements today. One of them deals with the, Ms. Perry and I will be along with the Valerie Shaw Board of Public Works to have a groundbreaking for the Manchester Streetscape Project at Manchester, between Vermont and Menlo, at 10 o'clock on Saturday, May 22nd. This is a project that's about four years in the waiting, and so we're very pleased to kick that off. Also, on Saturday, one of our major community groups, the Normandy-Haldale Community Association, along with Bishop Turner, is having their Neighborhood Block BBQ on Saturday, May 29th, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 87th and Halday, Haldale. And then the last announcement is that on Monday, May 24th, Mr. Cardenas, along with the Eighth District, is going to Crenshaw High to continue our prevention intervention and education program that both Mr. Padilla and Mr. Villarrealgoza have been a part of in the past. So that's at Crenshaw, just before they go on summer break. I'm sorry, and Jan Perry was there. And Jan Perry was there also.
We've been there for a piece of pie.
Pie.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Councilmember Han, did you forget about tomorrow morning, what we're doing?
Have a good weekend.
Where are we going tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning, we're having the Neighborhood of Congress. All of our neighborhood councils throughout the city of Los Angeles will be meeting tomorrow morning. I believe they're meeting as early as 8:00 a.m., 7:30 for breakfast.
Convention Center?
At the Convention Center. They'll be spending time talking about issues and just networking with each other. It should be, I forget, we're close to 80-something certified neighborhood councils, 85. So it's going to be a big event tomorrow morning. Any council members would like to show up, please do, and shake hands with the people who are forever changing the system of government in Los Angeles.
And we do invite the public to attend that, to the Convention Center. I think the elected officials are scheduled to be introduced around 10 o'clock.
Which I, yeah, right. I'm not going to be there, because I'm going to be down at the Merchant Marine, but I will be there at 8:00, and there'll be on display a model of our waterfront redevelopment plans in San Pedro. Our neighborhood councils in San Pedro wanted to make sure that all the neighborhood councils in the city learned what we're doing to redevelop the waterfront in the harbor area. So make sure you stop by and look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Announcements from Mr. Smith, Mr. Reyes, and Ms. Sikowski? No, Mr. Reyes?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I want to congratulate Councilmember Han on that riverfront, I mean, the waterfront, oops, great project. I also want to take a moment to thank the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council for working with our office. We had a great presence from the city family, the police department, building and safety, housing, street light, street services. We got together last night and engaged some very real issues, got to some core of some real problems in the neighborhood, and I just want to thank the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council for their great work, and the city family for coming out in the community in Lincoln Heights. I appreciated the evening, and we'll just keep building up on that communication and find ways to continue supporting our men and women in blue, who are so overwhelmed with many of the challenges in our city. So just want to say that publicly and thank them.
Ms. Sikowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, on Monday, before we get back in session, for anyone in the city of Los Angeles who is concerned and wants to begin to say to the decision-makers, the first decision-makers in the process of the LAX Master Plan, there is a hearing Monday. To accommodate everyone, that hearing Monday is going to be held at the LA Convention Center from 3:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. Two commissions, the Planning Commission and the Airport Commission, or what's left of it, are going to hold a hearing, and they are the beginning of the decision-making process. That is May 24th at the Convention Center, and they will render a decision potentially within a month or so later, but this is the time to say what people want to say, to help to try to influence the beginning of the decision-making process on this plan.
Thank you. It's very important, and plenty of parking, along with a lot of meeting space. Other announcements? If not, then, one other announcement on my part. Mr. Labonge mentioned cleanup in the NoHo area of the city for folks who are interested in cleaning up, but want an option maybe. At Hanson Dam, it's the Arundo Roundup, starting at 8:00 in the morning, and will be there till at least 1:30 or 2:00 in the afternoon. So come on out to Hanson Dam, follow the signs, and help with the Hanson Dam cleanup if you're at all interested. And are there any other final announcements? If not, please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning tributes, beginning with Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That is that we adjourn in memory of Jerome Gooch, who was born December 18th, 1941, in Kentucky, raised in Indiana. He relocated to Los Angeles at 18 years old, and attended LA City College, where I also attended at that time, received his bachelor's degree in physical education at Cal Poly Pomona, master's degree from University of Laverne. He had also played sports throughout his college career, and for a three-year period also was a defensive line coach for the Ventura County Cardinals. His first love, inspired by his minister father and his mom, was to reach out for at-risk children, and for 30 years, he had a career as a Head Start Program in Los Angeles, later relocated in Ventura County and completed his career in the Juvenile Hall Gateway Program for the, and then later became the Ventura County Superintendent of Schools. He's been honored in a variety of programs as a teacher's with excellence. He was committed to outreach of adolescents. He passed away suddenly while playing basketball with several of the youth that he was responsible for, and passed away on May 15th. Funeral service is today at 2:00. In lieu of flowers, the family asked that any donation be sent to the Ventura County Chapter of American Cancer Society. He also is a survivor of cancer for the last 10 years. He leaves his wife, Pat, and several young children, Martin, Amy, also two stepchildren, Kevin and Byron, and also a host of other relatives. Second, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Lincoln Kilpatrick, a well-known actor in the Los Angeles area. He appeared in more than 40 movies, got his first break as a cast of the Broadway hit Raisin in the Sun, where he co-starred with Sidney Poitier. He went on to roles with, in James Baldwin's Blues for Mr. Charlie the Slave and the Blacks, which featured Lou Gossett and Cecily Tyson. His recent credits include Soul Soldier, Uptown Saturday Night. He also, he was born in St. Louis, is a co-founder of the Kilpatrick's Cambridge Theater Arts School in Hollywood. He became the first black member of the Lincoln Center repository of the company. He has unfortunately lost his fight with cancer Tuesday, May 18th, and funeral service will be held next Wednesday.
Ms. Perry seconds. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am joined today by the staff of the Council District, Council District 12, to ask that you adjourn the honor of Donald Lee, John Young Lee, beloved husband of his new wife Nancy, his best friend, son of Susan and Young Lee, and brother of my legislative deputy, John Lee. He was a friend of everybody, and he passed away on May 16th at the young age of 39. Born in Hollywood, California, Don went on to receive degrees from Brown, Cornell, and Miami Universities. His life was dedicated to helping children. He started at the young age of eight when he volunteered to help autistic children at his elementary school. He continued his passion for helping children throughout his life, and was last employed as a psychologist at Children's Hospital of Denver, where he was officially known as the mayor of Children's Hospital. He will remember for his love of sports, cooking, his friends and his family, and helping children, but most of all, his love of his new wife Nancy. They'd only been married for a very short few weeks. We will miss Don in a stevieous wit. He made children and adults everywhere laugh. He has made the world a happier place by being here. A celebration of his life will be held at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 22nd, tomorrow, at Bethel Lutheran Church, 17500 Burbank Boulevard in Encino. In lieu of flowers, donations may be made in Donald's name to Activities for Retarded Children, 6456 Witsit Avenue, North Hollywood, 91606. May Donald Young Lee, and rest in peace, and we certainly, our hearts go out to his family, and particularly our good friend and colleague, John Lee.
All members. Mr. Villarrealgoza?
Yes, members, Mr. President, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Larry Jones. Larry Jones passed away on Thursday, May 13th, just a few days after celebrating his 90th birthday. Family was important to Larry, particularly his wife of 63 years, Helen. Helen and Larry had two children, Judy and Larry, and five grandchildren. All his family was with him to celebrate his 90th birthday. He was born in Pittsburgh on May 9th, 1914, and his family moved to Los Angeles in 1923. He attended Cathedral High School of Phantom, graduated in the sixth class to attend that school. After high school, he went on to Loyola College and then began working for the city of Los Angeles. Eventually, he worked his way up the ladder and became the director of street maintenance for the city of Los Angeles. Larry was also active in the community, even in retirement, serving as a member of the Retired City Employees Board for eight years. He's worked with Meals on Wheels and St. Vincent de Paul, at St. Dominic's in Eagle Rock, and loved playing golf. Funeral services will be held tomorrow afternoon at St. Dominic's Church in Eagle Rock. Also-
I think we should do all members. Larry Jones is one of the great heads of what was the Street Services Bureau. When I first started working for the city of Los Angeles almost 30 years ago, we'd call 5681, and Larry Jones would answer the phone and always be very helpful, and I know he was very involved in your community, Antonio, and a great Angelino, and he also happened to go to college with my dad at Loyola so many years ago, so I think we should, all members-
All members.
I also have the honor of asking you to adjourn in memory of a great American, Dr. Rosalio Florian Munoz, who passed away yesterday, May 20th, 2004, at 91 years of age. Dr. Munoz was the father-in-law of the CIO Executive Officer Terry Munoz, and the father of Judge Ricardo Munoz, the presiding administrative law judge of the ALA Office of Unemployment Insurance Appeals Board. Dr. Munoz's life was one of over 70 years of committed service to his community in the following areas. He served in the United States Navy during World War II in the Southern Pacific. He's one of the first Mexican-Americans in the United States to earn a doctoral degree. He earned his first of a series of degrees and licenses in 1933. He was a teacher at various schools and a lecturer at various local universities such as USC, Cal State Northridge, and Cal State LA, in the areas of educational psychology and social work. When he retired in 1976, he was the highest-ranking Latino in the ALA Unified School District. He was appointed by various governors such as Pat Brown and Ronald Reagan, and other elected officials of the state of California to examiner boards in the areas of social work, marriage counseling, and behavioral science. He sat on numerous nonprofit and for-profit community boards, as well as professional and church organizations such as the California Association of Supervisors of Child Welfare and Attendants, the Association of California School Administrators, Plaza Community Center Board of Trustees, and Trabajadores de la Raza. He published academic articles, did research presentations, as well as edited several books of poetry. He was still walking precincts for Mike Hernandez a few years ago, and for me, well into his mid-80s. He is survived by his wife, Maria Urias Munoz, his six children, 13 grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren.
Mr. Reyes?
I'd like to second and add on to his memory, another great contribution of his family, his son, Rosalio Munoz, one of the first Chicanos to become student body president at UCLA, at the heat of the civil rights movement in the late 60s, has been a role model for many of the Latinos and Chicanos who've gone into that university to essentially keep the voice heard regarding the needs for higher education for people of color.
Other tributes?
Mr. Padilla?
Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, members, I want to see noted in the paper today, we recognize the work of Marilyn J. Reese, who was 77, went past. She was the first female engineer hired by the state of California, native of South Dakota, came out to Los Angeles in 1948, and started working within the State Division of Highways, a forerunner to Caltrans. But her greatest design, which we received critically acclaimed, was in 1962, when she designed the interchange of the Santa Monica Freeway and the San Diego Freeway. And what always remembers me, when I was in high school, I'd take my aunt to LAX to catch a plane, and my aunt, who was an Immaculate Heart nun, who was one of the nuns who fought hard, as you know, those great Immaculate Heart nuns, with so much pride, she told me as we went through the interchange, "A woman designed this interchange." And that interchange is stated, although we focus on the four-level interchange downtown, architectural critics talk about the sweeping interchange of the 405 and the 10, the Santa Monica-San Diego Freeway, as being an exceptional architectural design. She retired in 1983 and then taught engineering at Long Beach. She's survived by her husband, Alvin, of 47 years, and two daughters. I think we should adjourn in memory for all the great times we flew through that beautiful interchange, barring any congestion, because of the design of a woman named Marilyn J. Reese, 77. I'd like to ask all members on that.
All members. Final tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.